We will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sitting in for Eric. He is away. Eric Barnman has an excused absence. Our alternate Glenn Wilkinson could also not make it as well. He's excused. And Gretchen Cast is the alternate for the town council who will be filling in for Amy Burns. Are there any public comments regarding any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I'll close the public comments section. Review and approval of the minutes from May 9. Do any of the board members have any comments or corrections? I think, and Mr. Levy is actually here so he can confirm this. On page nine, line 297. 297. Okay. Okay. I don't believe the word "not" is, I think what Mr. Levy had said was, "It is the skilled nursing they were looking for on the EDC." Which is basically what he was also on the prior page referring to. Someone who is in wheelchair bound, needs help with day-to-day functions, getting out of bed, lift. It's the lowest-impact traffic and we're the money from the cost facility. So I don't believe the word "not" should not be there.
Okay.
That should be deleted. It's got to be out of my...
Yeah, but apparently it printed out a little differently.
All right. So it's...
See, I have the margins different.
Okay. So it starts, "The 805 level has more people who can help people who cannot get out of the building if necessary to evacuate. It is the skilled nursing they were looking for on the EDC."
Yeah.
To be clear, that it wasn't like assisted living. It was more skilled nursing level.
Yeah. So on sentence 297, remove the word "not."
Correct. If there are no other corrections, I think you have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Any callouts in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, item number four, regular business. First order business will be the regional planner Kyle Pimental and the GIS planner Rachel Mack from the Stratford Regional Planning Commission are going to do their report on the findings of the groundwater modeling project they've been working on with other members of the community. Kyle?
So, good evening, everyone. Rachel and myself, we're going to give an overview of the project that we've been working on and just wrapped up the past month or so. About a month ago, you should have received copies of the final report, which is being reviewed right now at DES. It's got a final comment back within a couple of months. So, I'm going to talk about the overview of the project, some of the goals, and the process that we went through with the town and with the subcommittee. Give a very generalized overview of the model. Unfortunately, Jane Knott, who's a PhD student at UNH, she was the one that really did the model and worked out at UNH. She had jury duty today, so unfortunately, she couldn't be here. So if there are any technical questions having to do with the model, we'll take those back and we'll get them back to Jane. We'll also talk about some of the sea-level-rise scenarios that we used. Rachel's going to talk about the outcomes in terms of the maps that were created and what information are on those maps. And I'll finish up with some of the overall recommendations that we came up with for the town and some potential next steps. So to give, to go back to where we started, in 2016, the planning commission partnered up with the town and submitted an application to the state's local source water protection program. That's a program that comes around every year. They offer grants up to $20,000 and they're really looking to, for adequate drinking supplies and for safe drinking water for communities that are in this part of the state. What we decided to do was build off a model that already existed that UNH created and what they were looking at is the impacts of sea-level rise on groundwater and the rise of the groundwater table. Initially, this study was looking at the impacts of road pavement and that was being done on the coast. What we did was we took that model and we made some tweaks to it and we ran it again to look at the impacts for drinking water in Newmarket. The idea was to do the modeling and to determine any vulnerabilities that were in the town. So those vulnerabilities were things like public and private drinking water, septic systems, underground storage tanks, any contamination or hazardous sites. All that GIS information was overlaid and then they ran the model and we determined which ones were most vulnerable for the town. In terms of process, we started back in May of 2016. We held our first planning committee meeting in June and that was really the sort of a kickoff. What was the role of the committee, what the process was going to be like. Jane started constructing the model that summer. June to October, there was a lot of time spent on making tweaks to the model and learning which scenarios were going to be used. In our second planning committee meeting in March of this past year, the results from Jane's data was presented to the planning committee and we had a chance to receive some comments. And then in May of this past year, we had our final report or draft report, draft recommendations, and the maps that were produced were given to the group and we had some final comments for that. Which brings us down to June, which is our final presentation to this report. There were three overall goals that we wanted to accomplish as part of this application. The first was to understand how sea-level rise may impact groundwater sources. The second was to identify areas within the town that might be vulnerable. And then the third was to provide some recommendations and some strategies to help the community become more resilient. So to give a very brief overview of the model, and again, this is sort of Jane's territory, but it is a groundwater flow model that was used to predict the impacts of sea-level rise on groundwater levels and look at saltwater intrusion. There are different levels of thickness and what the model was looking at was the interface between freshwater and saltwater and where those two come together. The study area is what you see on the screen. It was this entire area, all of Newmarket, parts of Durham, Lee, Newfield, Exeter. This was the entire area that the model was looking at. So in theory, we could, we have this information. We could look at other communities along the coast. We could look at Durham, we could look at Newfield. To understand a little bit on why, which sea-level-rise scenarios were used, these are all based on emission scenarios. And the emission scenarios were put together by the International Panel for Climate Change. So these curves that you see on the screen, which are tough to see with this thing, the two scenarios that we use are the A1FI, which is the high, which is that light blue. And that scenario looking out to the end of the century is basically if no changes are made with energy efficiency, we still rely on fossil fuels, those green gas emissions continue to rise by the end of the century. The low scenario is that dark blue one that goes down. And that takes into consideration if globally, we start to reduce our reliance on fossil fuels and we start to really make some different energy choices. So that high scenario and that low scenario, those are the two that we look at when translating that to sea-level-rise scenarios. Given that, there are a number of different uncertainties that come into play with these. But to follow this curve, the sea-level-rise scenarios are based on that higher scenario. So you can see these, the scenarios that were used as part of this project was 1 foot by 2030, 2.7 feet by 26, 5.2 feet by 2090, and 6.6 feet by 2100. So those were the four different sea-level-rise scenarios that were modeled as part of this project, looking at sort of the worst-case scenario from now to the end of the century. This is what it looks like when it gets mapped out. That first map is 2030 with the 1-foot scenario. The top right is 2.7 feet at 26, the bottom left is 5.2 feet at 290, and then the bottom right is 6.6 feet by 2100. Those are different scenarios in incremental timeframes and going all the way out to, from 2030 to 2100. And Rachel will talk a little bit more about what these maps mean. So I'm going to turn things over to Rachel. She's going to talk about the maps. These are the four different maps that were produced and I'll let Rachel sort of go through those and explain what we found.
So as Kyle just mentioned, the person we want to show is really just the comparison over the short-term planning scenario versus long-term and that worst-case scenario by the 2100. And so focusing in more on the long-term worst-case scenario, we chose to represent that throughout the report with these different groundwater rise as well as the saltwater intrusion, since it will cover the greatest extent incorporated throughout all four of those scenarios and help plan for, you know, the potential predicted, most potential predicted impact. So from this map, you can see the range of groundwater rise predicted in that worst-case scenario is 1 to 7 feet with that 7-foot occurring on Moody Point, sort of a small extent that region, that maximum and Moody Point in general, that central area expected to experience the most groundwater rise. So some of the things that we, you know, really want to identify are, are there potential hazards that could come up due to this? What is other vulnerable infrastructure that we want to be aware of? And so we did identify two potential contamination sites, both identified by DES. One is the former Frank SMAS property, which in 2005 had a Phase 1 environmental assessment. It's now owned by the...
Nature and Forest Consortium.
And so it's continuing to be monitored, but sort of low threat at this point from what we can determine. The second was the Kevin DeArness Local Trust. It was identified as supporting vehicle repairs. And just based on the extent and scope of the property, we would anticipate or predict sort of low-volume impact, you know, not high-scale vehicle repairs or intrusion down there. The third was the Moody Point sewer pump station. You know, we didn't have a lot of data and information to determine the potential impacts for that, but just being on Moody Point and predicted to experience the greatest amount of groundwater rise, infiltration of water based on the depth of that pumping station, things like that, we did identify as a potential threat. With the DES data, we did also identify 30 private drinking water wells within that extent of groundwater rise. Some limits of that data is that only about 30% of those have been georeference, so we don't have locations of all private wells. It also only goes back to 1984, so wells installed prior to that, we don't have that data accessible, so there certainly could be more, but we did identify at least 30.
That was before 1984? You have the data?
We don't.
You don't? Since '84? Okay.
And then the final piece were the three public wells at Moody Point, sort of located right near the pumping station.
And the pumping station pumps the freshwater?
Sewer pumping station.
That's the sewer pumping station. Okay.
So the other piece of data that Jane provided with us was the saltwater intrusion or salinity concentration. So with that, in her model, she used zero for freshwater and one for saltwater, so it was a relative scale from 2016 levels. And so the shade of purple represents a percent increase from 2016. So as you can see, in that worst-case scenario of 6.6 feet sea-level rise, Moody Point again is predicted to experience the greatest increase in concentration of salinity, up to about 16%.
Could you speak into the microphone a little more? So, thank you. People are having a hard time hearing.
One thing we didn't take into account was the current depth of groundwater relative to the surface. So as you can see, the Moody Point wells are broken into layer 18 and layer 21 based on the depth of the well compared to private wells, which are generally a bit more shallow. Though deeper wells are more susceptible since groundwater is deeper and, you know, the first to experience that intrusion. But we weren't able to get that data at different depths, so we were only able to look at the public wells and not the private wells. That is something in the future that we may want to consider pulling that additional data.
And how deep are the public wells?
They were between 475 and 575 feet. Our final analysis was something we had modeled from a previous study in another community looking at risk to septic systems. Since we hadn't identified many local potential contamination sources, we thought that was definitely something that may also be impacted that we should consider for this report. And so what we did was we used data from the Websoil Survey. It pulled 10 characteristics related to risks for septic systems. We graded each of those 10 characteristics by a percentage provided by that data set from 0 to 1. We also looked at whether each site had the presence of wetlands, floodplains, or surface water, so any stream, river, pond, body, and scored each of those three components also as a 0 for not present or 1 for present. We determined a composite score of all 13 of those elements to determine sort of that risk factor for subject tanks. And so we unfortunately didn't have private subject tank data available. What we did do was approximate the location or presence of subject tanks based on those known private drinking water wells. And knowing where the public water supply infrastructure was outside of that range is likely that those properties would have their own private subject tanks. Again, one major limitation of this analysis was that the risk based on groundwater rise, if the subject tank is in a high-risk area, but the groundwater is currently at a level, you know, 40 to 70 feet below that point, even 7 or 8 feet of groundwater rise isn't going to have an impact. So again, that's something we would definitely take into account in a future analysis, but with this was a limitation.
Rachel, what was the, you said the Newmarket study was based on a previous study in another community. What was that other community?
Durham.
Durham. Thank you.
It was looking at a few different subdivisions. But again, the goal of this analysis was to start to identify areas that would be at greater risk relative to others, so incorporating that into future, you know, planning of that infrastructure and if that future data or resources are available to continue that study that we've done the preliminary work and have identified where to go from there. So I'll hand it back over to Kyle to talk about the recommendations.
So after the maps were produced, we met with the planning committee again and threw out some ideas and brainstormed some areas where the town might want to go for the future. We really looked at adaptation strategies, a timeframe, and what additional needs the town may need to accomplish this. So when it all, when it was all said and done, they got broken out into about three or four different strategies for those six different planning topics. And those are outreach and engagement. That could be something as easy as reaching out to residents about water consumption and best management practices. There's some regulatory planning recommendations, some long-term drinking water, thinking about potentially adding or existing, or taking the existing water and sewer and extending that to other areas. Infrastructure and equipment purchasing, things like to monitor salinity levels in certain areas. Additional research that is, that could potentially be used for the future. And emergency management, getting some of this information in the next round of your hazard mitigation plan or having in your emergency operations plan, having this be known and at least identified as a potential concern. So those were some of the topic areas and you'll see that in the report listed out with who's being responsible and some general timeframes and additional needs to accomplish those. In terms of next steps, this was really a pilot project, so and by every sense it was. This has never really been done before. The model that we used was something that was being used for something a little bit different. So there's a lot more that can be done, but with the timeframe and with the funding that was available, you know, we were sort of strapped a little bit on what we could accomplish. But there are a lot of other options for potential future renditions of this, and the model can do a lot more than what it did for this particular project. So we can map the model layers at different scales. We can rerun it with different sea-level-rise scenarios. What Jane used in terms of the pumping at Moody Point, it was a consistent scale. We could alter that to more realistic, say, what is the pumping scale for or what the capacity is and what they're actually using, because those change during different times of the year. This particular model just looked at it a flat line.
Can you explain that a little bit more?
So, yeah.
Like what was the assumption behind the pumping?
So I think what Jane used was the average and then she just used that number all the way across, so, which is not really what's happening out at Moody Point because it changes a lot during the year. So we could go back and rerun that. At the time, we didn't have that information. So I think she was looking at historic trends and she just used that flat line across.
How many gallons of, do they tend to pump in a day? Do you know?
I don't know. That would be a question for...
I think he's here.
How many gallons are being pumped?
At Moody.
At Moody Point?
Typical day is probably 8,000 gallons.
And how much has that, what percentage has that increased, say, over the last, what was it, five years ago? What were you pumping five years ago?
Well, five years ago, it was actually more than that because we were running irrigation out there at that time.
The sprinklers, yeah.
During the summertime, it was high at 26,000 gallons.
Excuse me. Bruce, can you introduce yourself and where you live?
I'm Mr. Johnson. I live out at Moody Point and I happen to be the water assistant chairman for our community. So I'm pretty familiar with what we're doing with the wells there now. In 2012, we had done some well testing.
Bruce, can you come up to the mic, please, just for people at home? Thank you.
As everybody probably knows, we're a public water source, so we're treated the same as the Newmarket wells are, so we have to go through all the same level of testing. And 2012, when we did a complete chemical test of our wells, we notified by DES that our saline levels were high, typically referred to as TDS, total dissolved solids in the water. And they had risen from an average of, I'd say, 500 on the TDS scale, up to about 1,200. And we had, up till that point, been irrigating during the summertime and using, as I mentioned, upputs to 26,000 gallons a day during the summer. We stopped at, in 2012, doing irrigation. Since then, we have not done any irrigation at Moody Point. A typical day today is roughly 8,000 gallons. Summertime, it gets a little higher when people are watering plants and stuff like that. Wintertime, it's a little closer to 6,000. But our TDS level has stabilized. We typically, right now, run anywhere between 1,000 to 1,200, depending on the time of year and what's happening with the watering.
Very good. Thank you.
What's the average household consumption? Just to put it in perspective.
Typical, about 100 gallons per day at Moody Point, maybe even a little less than that. It depends. We have a total right now of 88 units, so we're running about 8,000, so just under 100 gallons a day.
So one other thing to add to what Bruce was saying in terms of what the total dissolved solids are right now, between that 800 and 1,000 milligrams per liter, the EPA says that 250. Once you get above that aesthetically, you can start to sort of get that salty taste a little bit. So that's just for frame of reference, that's where...
What was the number?
250.
250.
So the last two pieces of this are, you can add and remove wells, change the pumping rates, and also investigating the changing shoreline. That wasn't taken into consideration. And what that means is that as sea-level rises, it's going to impact different areas depending on the topography of Newmarket. That wasn't taken into consideration, it was just raised up. So this model could look at how sea-level rise is really going to look with Newmarket's coast. But that was another sort of piece in the model that we didn't have the time or funding to do, but we could do it to get a more accurate depiction. But again, this project was sort of to do a very generalized planning project to give you a general idea of where there are vulnerabilities for the town and where you can go to improve this model. The data's already available, we just need to sort of add to it. And UNH, both Jane and Jennifer Jacobs are interested in continuing this type of work. She's already presented on it at a number of different times. I could say from speaking with other communities, other communities are also very interested to see how this is going to play out because it's now sort of a new emerging topic for communities to start thinking about for the future. So I'll sort of tip my cap to Newmarket. This was a pretty innovative project and, you know, we were really happy that this came out and that the state, the DES, was something they were really behind this and they're really interested in hoping that this sort of continues to move forward. So we do have some project partners, you know, if the town wants to take the next step.
So just another question I have. From what you just mentioned, you're looking at a model that with sea-level rise is thinking that all topography is equal in the coast.
For this particular...
So you haven't taken into count any of like the back channel floodplains up in Dover or Newfields or...
No.
So this would be very different if you did this on a regional basis?
Right. So this study was initially done on the coast. It was, I think it was Hampton where they've done this. But for this model that they did in that, for that area that I showed earlier, they didn't take into consideration anything that was outside of the study area and they didn't take into consideration changes in the coast line. So, but they could do that, they just didn't for this particular one.
Do you know what our elevation is in Newmarket, let's say out on Moody Point versus the city of Portsmouth?
At, Kyle, at what level, you said at 250 milligrams per liter, it starts, the water starts to taste salty. What...
The EPA, that's there. It's a secondary drinking water standard and it's aesthetically, there's nothing harmful there, but...
What is the harmful level?
I don't know. I don't know what they're...
Yeah.
Like I said, it's a secondary drinking water, so I don't, I would imagine it, I don't know what that level is.
Do you know what the town's level is on the town wells?
I don't know the exact answer to that, but I will tell you that what I do know is between, when you start to get up around 1,000 to 1,500, the water starts to become what they call... the water starts to become what they call brackish. And it might have some taste to it, and it will probably have a little bit of odor to it. Above 1,500, it's starting to get almost to the point of being salt.
Wow.
Getting very salty at that point. As I remember the chat and looking at it when I was looking at all this stuff. So that, we monitor our level literally on a daily basis. And we report it on a monthly basis within the community so we know we are, where we are. And we, like I said, we typically write around 1,000 to 1,100.
And has that been consistent since 2012? That level of the TDS?
It's pretty consistent. Actually, back in 2012 when we were irrigating, we were a little higher than that. We've managed to bring it down a little bit and stabilize it down to about 1,000.
So there does seem to be some correlation between pumping extra water, and that draws the salt in because...
In fact, even now, I can watch in the summertime. In the wintertime, it will drop down to about probably 900. And in the summertime, we'll pop back up to 1,000, sometimes to 1,100, depending on how much watering is going on.
Because I thought I read in the report that the amount of pumping for a well does not increase salinity, but it seems that it does.
Oh, I would disagree.
Yeah.
Just from observation of what we have, it does have an impact.
So what's the, do we have a number for, like, the maximum buildout of Moody Point?
That's a good question. And Sean Gregg, our Director of Environmental Services, has been working with an engineering firm, Wright Pierce, and they are working on a buildout for water as well as sewer. And the report, I understand, is in draft form, and it will be released shortly. I've had a chance to talk to Sean Gregg about the work that has been done by the university with the Regional Planning Commission. And he and the water engineer expressed interest in it and immediately asked for a copy of the report, which I sent off to them this afternoon. So they are interested in this subject. And Kyle, perhaps you could, we could connect with Sean and get an answer to some of the questions that were raised about how this compares with what the town's water supply looks like.
Sure. The other thing to mention, too, to get to the question that Rose had, was we have information about the well depths and the TDL, or TDS. And there is a correlation to the lower, the deeper wells have the higher concentrations. So well one is at 600, give or take, 610 feet. And that TDS is about 100 milligrams, 1,000, sorry, milligrams per liter. The second deepest well is well three at 607 feet, and that's about 1,400 milligrams per liter. And then well two is at 510, and that's at 240. So the reason where they get lower is they blend the three different water sources, and that's how they're able to bring that down. But we did find that the deeper the wells, the higher the concentration, which makes sense because that's closer to the groundwater table.
So Kyle, just a question on table six. Your table six, if I read that correctly, are those numbers just the number of wells on each road? So each row on there, Bay Road, there'd be one well impacted under the one, one-foot scenario, up to four wells being impacted under the six-foot scenario? Is that what those numbers are?
It's the different levels, different...
That's the rise in the scenario for each of those locations.
Yeah, so that's the groundwater rise. So that...
Oh, so that's a one-foot, but the one-foot, the one-foot, the column is the one-foot rise, two-foot rise, five-foot rise, six-foot rise, isn't it? What, the actual number, is that the number of wells that are impacted under each scenario? So on Bay Road, first column, what's that number one?
Number one, it says under one foot.
Bay Road, four, five, one is under one foot. What is that? Is that one well being impacted?
Well, that is one well.
That's one foot of groundwater rise. So that's the one-foot sea level rise scenario.
Right.
So that, that well on Bay Road experiences one foot of groundwater rise. So that, the column header above the four scenarios, that's groundwater rising feet. So the second one, 2.7 feet sea level rise, that same well on Bay Road will experience two feet of groundwater rise.
Oh, okay. So, so really, each row is just a well? So there's whatever, 30 wells there?
Those are the 30 private wells.
Those are the 30 private wells.
All right. So 30 private wells, okay. Thanks.
And 30 private wells, because that's all you have the data for?
Right. There's, there could be more. We don't have anything private to...
Any other questions from the board? Is this report available to the public online?
We haven't put it online yet. We wanted to have the planning board review it first. And there is some revisions that are going to be made by DES, and I think we'd like to include the final document after DES has reviewed it.
Yeah, right now, Pierce and Steve are looking at it right now. We're supposed to get comments back from them in the next week or two. I would imagine it's going to be probably a quick turnaround, but we'll get you a PDF sometime in July.
July, okay. Stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public have any questions? Those staff or regional planning folks? If you, excuse me, if you'd come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Bob Rogers from Moody Point.
You talked about sea level rise. Did you do any thinking about also the effect of drought? Does drought have an impact on all this stuff?
So it, it may, but for this particular project, drought wasn't taken into consideration. It was strictly looking at sea level rise and that impact. So we didn't take into consideration what drought would do to sort of let, to lower those models. We didn't look at that.
Dale Pike, Smith Garrison. I sat on in, sitting on the technical committee. And to your comment, Rosie, I think what really struck me is she may not have, Jane may not have modeled different amounts of pumping, but she showed what happened in the model. You know, she showed the effects of rising sea levels, and you could see that there were changes associated with rising sea level. When they, she also showed what happened when the pumps were off versus pumps off. So the, the effect of drawing water had the most noticeable impact. And I thought that really was sort of a striking thing for a planning board to be able to look at is to realize how much, you know, if we have development in vulnerable areas of the town, we shouldn't have to go through the experience of, you know, having high, high irrigation going on. Water uses, because it's, these are bedrock wells. You don't exactly know who else's well would be impacted if you're drawing a lot of water. And, and they didn't model drought per se, but it is clearly how much recharge you get. You know, the three major factors, as Jane presented, and you can correct me, but you know, where, how much recharge you get, which could come from rain, but is also impacted by how much impervious services you have. Or in the case of Moody Point, what made it more vulnerable was that there, rather than, you know, you're pulling groundwater out of the ground, but you're shipping, the spent groundwater in the form of the sewer water is being shipped back to the treatment plant. So it's not recharging the ground. It's created extra vulnerability you might not have done if you were thinking in those terms. So, anyway, it was a very interesting committee to sit on.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
And Jane's report is attached as one of the appendix.
Next agenda item, we have Cheney Property Management Corp. They have a request for an extension of the approval for an application for site plan and special use permit at 52, 54, and 56 Exeter Road, tax map U2 lots 12, 13, and 14, M2A zone. The approval was to remove three existing buildings and construct a two-story, 27,000 square foot mixed-use building, with commercial on the first floor and residential on the second floor. I think all the members have a letter from Mr. Cheney. Diane, do you have anything to add to that?
No, just that I've had a couple of conversations with Mr. Cheney. And I think, you know, we're all disappointed that the project hasn't taken off and gone forward. And he explained to me that, you know, given some of the conservative lending practices in the financing world, that the project, you know, ran into some difficulties. And he just needs some additional time to be able to pull all the pieces together. And I personally think it's a reasonable request, given that a lot of effort and work went in by this planning board on the site review, but also on the zoning changes that the council have approved. So I would recommend the two-year extension.
Is this for six months, a two-year? Yes, under the RSA 6739, he is looking to move the time period out on the extension to January 19th, 2020.
Completion of the project. He already has approved plans. He did receive a conditional approval.
Substantial completion.
He has met all the conditions. The plans have been signed by the chairman. We have a developers agreement. We're just talking about the period for completion of the project for vesting purposes.
So he's looking for a two-year extension?
The request is to extend his time period for substantial completion under RSA 6739 to January 19th, 2020. Is there a motion to...
Is that a...
The, the developers agreement says two years. The project has to be completed within two years. The two-year time period will be up January 2017. And he's putting in the request early to ask for an additional two years because he feels that he needs that additional time to be able to pull all the financing together to make the project happen.
And the construction.
And this is for vesting purposes so that, you know, if, he has two years to do substantial completion, and at that point, he'll be exempt from any further zoning changes that might come along.
Diane, what's the definition of substantial completion?
That is, the developers agreement is also included in the state RSA, which I see you have a copy of. And I think it was defined by the planning board as part of the project. And if I recall correctly, it was site grading, putting in the building foundations. If you care for me to take a minute, I can go pull the developers agreement to clarify that with you.
Could, could we tie that definition to the RSA? And then say...
It's already tied to the RSA. Because the RSA requires us to define that as part of our approval process.
I, I, I think my only concern would be is, is everyone clear on what the definition of substantial is? And if long as we're, that means the same thing to us as it does to him.
It's written in the agreement that we have the developers agreement that has been reviewed by legal counsel to make sure that it's consistent with the state law. And I do have a copy. I can make that available to the board members.
No, no, I trust you on that. Thank you.
I just can't remember off the top of my head what specifically the language stated.
And it would have been, it would have been spelled out in the conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you.
So is the board's pleasure to, I mean, we, we have plenty of time. We, if you, if you want to, if people haven't had a chance to really look at this, we can, you know, continue it to the next meeting.
I have another question, though. Under the, under RSA 67439, what is their timeline recommendation? They say?
There isn't a recommendation. They just said to the planning board to define when substantial completion occurs.
It's giving the authority to the planning board.
Because it's, it, well, he says, "I do not think is sufficient time" under the RSA timeline.
Well, the RSA says you get, the planning board has to define the time. I mean, I can run and get the proposals if you want to. I might take a few minutes to dig it out.
Could we continue this to the next week?
We can definitely continue it.
Can, can any other parameters be tied around that? I mean, my only concern would be the vacant buildings sitting there being vacant. From either a public health nuisance, because now they're vacant, or they've become problematic. So, I mean, my general feeling would be more comfortable if they showed some progress and at least removed the buildings and began some level of site prep tied to the continuation.
Is there any way to hold, to your point about the building? Maybe it's that the building has to be secure, you know, something on that idea?
I don't think the building's vacant.
It's not vacant, it's being used.
It's not used, it's just, I don't think they've made investments in the building knowing it's coming down eventually.
I think just one building is being used for his office, but the other buildings are vacant. They're, yeah, they're...
They've been clearing, they've been cleaning them out.
Yeah. I would like to continue this to our next meeting so we can put the questions... I'd like to continue to our next planning board meeting of July.
What date is that? That's a good question, Rosie.
The Cheney Property Management Corporation requests for an extension.
Probably the second week. That's going to be the 11th.
July 11th, okay. So I'd like to make a motion to continue the Cheney Property Management Corporation request for extension of approval for an application for site plan and special use permit at 52, 54, and 56 Exeter Road, tax map U4 lots 12, 13, 14, and the M2A zone to our July 11th, 2017 meeting.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Meanwhile, I will pull that language from the developers agreement and make copies of it.
Great, super. We'll have all that information. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the continuation of a public hearing to amend Chapter 32 of the zoning in Appendix A subdivisions in Mississauga, the town of Newmarket, New Hampshire, in accordance with RSA 677-2, RSA 677, Section 6, and RSA 677, Section 7. First of the amendments had to make modifications to Section 32 Special Use Permits to allow assisted living and memory care unit. And two, to add new Article 5, Section 162, assisted living overlay district as an overlay district or portionally existing B1 and B2 zoning off New Road. So just to bring everyone up to date, we've just received today a letter from attorney, the town council, Attorney Rattigan. And we need to vote whether or not we want to make that information public.
And everybody has a copy of that?
Yep, yep. So do I have a, a motion on that?
I'd make a motion to make the June 13, 2017 letter from Donna Hoop, Tucker, and Chandala Lawyers regarding the ham parcel public.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Any of those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And these copies are available?
Yeah, there were a couple on the back table. I don't know if...
So much for, so much for having the motion to make it public.
I'm happy to make, if I can share with you Valerie, please.
So...
Got a copy on my...
So I think, given the, given the period that we just received this, I'm not sure how much of, we want to get into a discussion of this. The other thing I'll bring up is that Diane has done a lot of research in the classifications of different types of facilities. And I think, given that information, Rosie has suggested that we reconvene the committee in order to really kind of better define what the EDC was looking for and the intent of that, to come up with these specific classifications. And Mr. Levy, thank you for providing that prior information at our last meeting. So that's kind of where I think the planner's recommendation is. It will also give, I think, butters or interested parties some time to review the town attorney's information relative to title and boundaries. It will give the time. It will give the time. And the town will also be, at the recommendation of the town attorney, updating the tax map.
So basically, should this be reposted? Because, I mean, I'm not sure that we're going to even have the word assisted living in here. So I think we should just, when we decide exactly what we're going to do there from the committee, then we should just repost a public hearing.
If you repost the public hearing for this-
If the language has changed, you should repost it.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. But I don't know. I mean, that needs to be discussed.
But while there are parties here, I would like to open the public hearing to see if there's any new or additional information that you have for the board, in which in the committee is part, you know, some members are a part of the committee, or any questions that, you know, we can get answers for. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak? Mr. Levy?
Evening, Lloyd, Chair, Madam Chair.
Name and address?
Gary Levy, 81 New Road.
Thank you.
I didn't actually come to speak tonight, but just two things as an aside. I think the EDC had suggested regarding the previous speakers, a coastal protection zone regarding density around more sensitive areas. So the planning board might want to revisit some of those recommendations. It was, it was a little lower density, but it might be appropriate since people are experiencing some issues in those areas. I did speak to a high insurance account who is the long-term care ombudsman of New Hampshire. She was very helpful. She sent me some information. I didn't really chase it down because I was kind of waiting for the maps. And I'm glad that's sort of been ameliorated or rectified for the moment. And the only thing, other thing I would say is, I think it's a good idea to maybe go back with the subcommittee, drill it down, decide, you know, what you think is appropriate for New Road based on EDC recommendations. You might want to take a look at 152 as well. I suggested that maybe the town looks at this more in a comprehensive way, just so the town has an overall plan for where it wants to go. Just as a thought. And other than that, I have a bunch of phone calls I can make and to bring you more information. I know skilled nursing is designated under licensing A-07, but I don't want to get involved in that. I just, I think it would be a good idea to, before we have another hearing, public hearing, maybe get a better idea as to where we're going, then have a public hearing, get the information out to the public. And could you put that map that you just sent out from Gotti Do or the legal, no, no, could you put that on the website?
I suppose we could, sure.
It would be good. Then I, then I could download it. I know I have a copy here, but then we can still look at it.
I believe we can do that.
Yeah, it should be a public, thanks.
Any other comments or question, information?
I would like to maybe, okay.
My name is Mark Batcher, 184 New Road. And we're the ones that wear the driveway or the entrance to the new proposed.
It's not the entrance. It's not the entrance.
Let's be clear, the overlay district is just being discussed as a permitted use that would be available to a certain area. And in this case, the, if you look at the map, those particular lots. There's no proposal before this board that would, is describing any kind of development scheme or where an entrance would be. That would be something that a developer would have to come to this board with a proposed plan. Okay? So there's nothing to say that.
What I'd like to clarify for people who are interested, because of the error in the tax map, the configuration that is now shown with the road and the lots carved out, all that's going away. So basically, you'll have two vacant lots that will show on the tax map, and there will not be a proposed right of way that goes adjacent to your property. Is that helpful?
Yeah. There may be easements into the various properties, but that would be under, that's nothing to do with the, with tax maps.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, seeing no further discussion on that.
Can I? Because I did quite a bit of research. I'd like to at least talk about what I found.
Okay, I thought we're holding that to the committee.
Well, I just want to just clarify a couple of things that assisted living comes under a general category of residential care and health facilities, which are licensed by the Department of Health and Human Services. And that is defined in RSA 151 Code 1. And it's a statute, a general statute, that provides for the development, establishment, and enforcement of standards for the care and treatment of persons in hospitals and other facilities in which medical, nursing, and remedial care is rendered. It provides for the licensing of those facilities. And I have a list of 30, excuse me, I think there's 23 facilities that fall under the category of residential care and health facility units that are licensed under this RSA. And it runs the whole gamut from adult daycare facilities to surgery centers to hospitals, laboratories. And there are some provisions for assisted living and community living facilities. And in the RSAs, which I have copies of, and I'm more than happy to share with anyone who'd like the clarification, there are basically four levels, what they call of continuing care for assisted living facilities and nursing homes. And the first item, which is contained in Section 804, and I have all the regulations here, of the administrative code of New Hampshire, is a very minimal care of residential services that has minimal supervision and health care. It provides housing in a home-like setting. That's the most flexible and for people who are considered to be, you know, living independently. The second category, which is under the administrative code of 805, provides another tier of services, which are supportive services, which are available from appropriately trained licensed individuals. And it shall require the services to be complicated, to provide 20, not to require 24 hours of nursing supervision. So it's not the same as a nursing home. We have somebody on staff 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And those folks in this supportive residential health care facility have to be capable of self-evacuation. Okay? The next tier is a nursing facility, which provides 24-hour service and provides a range of social and health services. And the fourth tier in this continuum of care concept is for special needs residential facilities, which provides specialized supervision and training. And I think, you know, when we start looking at what uses we want to permit in this area, we need to be looking at the range and decide what is the appropriate, given the goals of the committee and what the planning board desires as far as facilities in that area. I just wanted to clarify that. And I have all the documentation here, as well as a directory of all the facilities in New Hampshire. And if anyone is having difficulty sleeping at night, I would be more than happy to share this with you so you can bring yourself up to speed. It's a very complicated system, and we are learning. And we want to make sure that time is given to carefully weigh the issues.
Dale, while you're here, you're still, you're still part of the committee? Will you continue to serve on that, or will we have a replacement?
Uh, sure.
Well, if you can get back to Diane on that. And then, and Gary, you're still the chair of the EDC?
I'm a council.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any-
I think there is. I posted an opening for the EDC. I thought I saw that.
Were you serving as a council appointee or a member of the council?
I think he was a-
Can we find out who the, who are real? If there's openings on the committee, and then Gretchen, if you can take it up with the council as far as getting another appointee.
Initially, I was a council rep. There were two council reps if you go way back when we had 11 members. Then we cut it back to two. I think I was elected the chair in the beginning, and then I was the chair through last year. Then we didn't need waiting for this. So if there's an opening, I would probably serve because I think it's not a bad meeting in town. Anyway, I didn't know there was any openings.
We'd like a member of the EDC to make sure that the staff can meet.
Diane, thank you for the time, by the way.
Yeah, I just wanted to help clarify some of the issues that did come up that we talked about that seem to be glossed over.
Where is the information this briefly for, is it on the website for openings on committees? Because I couldn't, I just-
It's posted right outside here on the bulletin board.
Wendy Chase is sort of the coordinator of that for the town administrator.
Okay, seeing that our chairman's not here, there'll be no chairman's report. Are there any committee reports? Gretchen, anything from the council relative to planning board issues?
And then I recall, no.
Peter? Regional planning?
He's been traveling.
As far as the regional planning commission goes, they just sent in a new transportation project list and had that approved, and now they're making amendments to that. So mostly budgets are going down because of change in the inflation rate, so.
Okay. Any committees, Roseanne?
No, CIP should be, I'll discuss that with Diane, but we're gonna-
I'd need to talk to her about that.
We're gonna start in August. Anyway, whatever.
Shane? Not sure what committee you're serving on right now?
Nope.
Janice? Who's that conservation commission rep?
We were trying to talk Glenn Wilkinson into stepping to the plate. He's, he's been very busy with his work. And he didn't give me an answer. He was sort of invasive about it.
I wouldn't mind doing conservation. If Glenn doesn't want to do it, I wouldn't mind doing it.
So that's an appointment by the chair or a nomination through the planning board?
It's a good question. I think it's a nomination through the planning board.
I'll nominate Rosie and Quox to serve as the planning board representative to the conservation commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for doing that.
And Peter Nelson has been officially nominated and appointed to the Strat Regional Planning Commission, and the council took that at their last meeting, I guess.
Thank you very much.
That's what you, that's what you meant to report. Hey, Diane, do you have anything to report?
I do. The town has been very fortunate to receive an $8,000 grant under the Setting Sale Program, which is the new program to assist with some of these climate change resiliency initiatives that we've talked about. And we, Peter was there, and Dale, and Gretchen. We had a workshop with the regional, two regional planning commissions, and DES was there, and we did some brainstorming, came up with some ideas on projects. One of them was to update the town's stormwater regulations. And so we, because there's been a lot of changes since we adopted them the first time around, which is back in 2008. And the Watershed Alliance has recently come up with an updated model for stormwater regulations. And we are going to be working on using that as sort of the model for us to move forward and tweak our regulations so we can get something on the books. It's a grant that is, has a 10-month timeframe, and the Strat Regional Planning Commission, perhaps Kyle and Rachel will be working with us. But also, we're going to be bringing in some people from the New Hampshire Cooperative Extension Service to assist with public education and outreach, and the UNH Stormwater Center because they're, you know, sort of our local technical experts on the whole value of stormwater regulations and their effectiveness. So anyway, that's pretty exciting. And we're going to be starting up the project in July. We're already, here we are in June. But I would like to ask you if you are interested in it, if you'd like to participate. We're going to have a steering committee and-
And this, too.
And there's also, exactly, there's another meeting coming up on, what's the date of that, Peter?
June 28.
June 28 is going to be here in Newmarket in our auditorium on what this means for Newmarket and to give us sort of an introduction and prelude to the regulations that they're recommending that we adopt. So I hope that if you're interested in serving on the committee, that you take that in as well.
And do we need to provide, are there matching hours that need to be provided as part of the grant?
This is not a matching grant, although, you know, my time will be involved, obviously, and the committee's time, and that will certainly give us credit towards perhaps future grants that we may be eligible for.
And does this also go towards our?
Well, that's a good question. Credits towards our stormwater management MS4 responsibilities.
MS4 responsible issue.
Right. We, we're not in that time, you know, we have another year and a half to get our act together, so to speak, by, excuse me, July 2018. But those regulations will, you know, bring us the opportunity to claim credits in the future so that we can meet our responsibilities under that program.
Well, and this is a 10-month program, and then going through the whole public process of updating, it could be next July before we even update the chapter.
Right, but we'll at least have something in place so that we'll be ahead of the curve.
And will the funding for that sales, the $8,000, help you get information that you could use for the requirements for the MS4?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, you know, there are public education and outreach components to it, and, you know, bringing the public works department on board in terms of good housekeeping measures that they would need to adhere to. So this is viewed as an opportunity also to educate the public in the town so that people understand what the MS4 program is all about, so we can move forward in a pro act.
Very good. So if the actual grant is to assist the planning board in updating our chapter?
Not the chapter.
Okay, just our regulations.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, under our subdivision.
And site plan.
Okay.
Subdivision on site. So do we have any-
So-
I signed up for this.
Oh, good.
Okay.
And everybody got that, by the way?
So are there any, any planning board members that would like to help with this project?
I guess I will.
Peter? Good. Is this a planning board member on there? Excellent, thank you.
Gretchen, no?
Yes.
That'd be super. Great, thank you.
She's very interested in it, I know.
Yeah, I am.
We've had several conversations about it.
Okay, that's great.
Great, excellent, thank you.
All right, any other new business or old business?
I just want to say that the Newmarket Gardeners had their plant sale June 10th at the library, and it was such a success. I'd like to thank everybody who helped to dig up plants and transport and set up and talk. We've got some new people, and I'd like to thank everybody who came out and bought our plants. We were very, very successful, and we're looking forward to doing it again next year.
Well, thanks for helping beautify the town.
Yeah, welcome. I know the guys are fixing the granite curbing. They have to raise the granite curbing around the flowerbed on Jerry Ave before the state repaves that. They were just going to repave it and-
Is that what they were doing out there?
Yeah, they were going to just repave it and cover up part of the granite. So Steve had Rick fix that, and he gave them walking orders, you know, don't mess up their plants.
Okay.
But, yeah, it was really, really great. Joan DiOrio, who was one of the original founders from about 20 years ago, did a fantastic job.
Well, thank you to all the volunteers. Ah, is there a motion?
Sure, a motion, please, John.
Second.
Hey, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you for using the ocean.
Meeting adjourned at 8:07.
That was good.
Well done, Dale.
Covered a lot of ground.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.